The whole meeting order, we can stand as I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody for coming. Mrs. Castor, do you have any visitor sign in when she must be?
Yeah.
Do we have any report of boards and committees other than what I need to discuss? Alright, then we will get into the ever exciting NISBA resolutions. So there are... A lot, yeah. That's seventeen twenty-four.
It's twenty-five, Mr. and five.
So twenty-five resolutions that have been vetted and five that have not that are considered late resolutions. Dealing with the first twenty-five, does anybody have any issues with any of those? Because we have to... Mark, are you our delegate this year? We have to give Mark authority to vote at the annual meeting. So I'll open the floor if anyone has any problems with any of the twenty-five or want to discuss them.
Sorry.
Mrs. Ernst.
I know nobody wants to discuss them, but number twelve is the same as number four. It was redundant and not as well-written, but I thought number four did a better job of talking about reimbursement from state. And pretty much the same thing is true with number fifteen. Number eleven talks about, you know, they're both of them are basically addressing some environmental direction. And number eleven talks about it in terms of reimbursing schools for spending for things like solar panels that might cost them a little bit more and then, you know, would come from some green fund where they would be reimbursed for that, which I feel like in and of itself isn't incentive to go in that direction. I don't feel like needing to be telling school districts what they should be spending their money on, which is the case in number fifteen. So they would address the same issue.
I have the twelve to the one-four, like the content for that.
Correct.
Second question around the...
I like the content of four better than twelve.
Does anyone want to see this? I have an extra card.
Okay. I'm going to bring my computer so I can read it to... I think number four is the way to go on that. It's meal reimbursement.
So are you suggesting we vote?
Yes on four, no on twelve. And yes on eleven, but no on fifteen.
What is it? So the no's you would suggest are?
Twelve and fifteen.
Twelve and fifteen.
And just because of that?
Unfortunately, that diversity was, the previous ones are more clearly worded and get more to the root of the problem as opposed to like the... So number eleven talks about getting reimbursed or being green. And number fifteen talks about making school districts be green. If you know what I'm saying. Like they're trying to address environmental issues in a different way than fifteen. I feel like we just followed the mic. You know, but number eleven will address it in and of itself.
Is everybody...
Does that make sense? Yeah.
Is everybody okay supporting those? Mark, you get those?
I have it.
Okay. Now, moving on then to the late resolutions. I would propose that, I don't know what everybody thinks, but in reading them, but they have not been vetted, so no recommendation by NISBA has been made to them, I would suggest we vote no. And then let them, if they want to put them out next year and let them be vetted through the resolution committee that they have with NISBA, so be it.
How do you even come through without being vetted? Why do you get a late submission? I've never seen that before.
Jeff, you?
I agree. I've never seen that before, that they've allowed them through.
Yeah.
I don't remember the process. One year, Amherst did submit a resolution. Dr. Lee and Spearman, many years ago.
But there's a specific timeline and I don't know if you have that with everyone?
Yes. Well, but they do let you bring new ones up at meetings. So this could be a step in the right direction as far as at least giving them a chance to be vetted before somebody gets up at the microphone. So I think that's the only thing they're offering here is, you know?
Well, and then make it true because it is virtual.
Yeah.
The vote is virtual, so that could be why they did.
I agree with Paul. They can bring them back next year if they struggle with that.
Is everybody good with that suggestion? All right, you have your orders. Mark? Perfect. No other committee reports?
If I get, I just certified. So from eighteen to twenty-five, they are recommending that we vote no, and we are agreeing that they are voting no.
Correct.
So I think that's correct.
Or agreeing with their recommendations other than twelve and fifteen.
Thank you. Yeah, they were pretty innocuous, though I don't feel like they changed the intent. They just clarified that you would vote no.
Alright, that will turn over the superintendent's report.
Thank you. First, we got is our external auditors' report. So our representatives, the treasurer and the secretary are here to join us to review our annual financial report. Welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, well, good evening, everyone. I'm Carl Wilmer. I've been the engagement partner from Josh and Malachi. I'm here on it for the past few years. And with me tonight is Charles Tradier. He's the senior manager on the audit job, so he did a little bit more of the grunt work and is more familiar with actual testing and individual making sure that supervision of the staff on-site and facilitating paperwork. So we're here tonight to present on the results of our audit of the district's fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. The audit was conducted primarily in August and finishing up the fieldwork. And then the last month, we spent working with them, been back and forth on putting together the draft financial statements. So tonight, we put together a presentation similar to past years just to help facilitate a walkthrough of both the audit process as well as some of the high-level financial highlights of the general fund of the district, which represents the lion's share of the activity. So first off, just to re-familiarize the group with what we provide at the end of each year. First off, of course, the basic financial statements. So management, the treasurer, school business official, they're in charge of the staff who maintain all the accounting transactions throughout here in their general ledger. And they compile all of those annual information, financial information into financial statements. And then our job as your external auditors is to come in and assess risk, design tests to gain assurance that the amounts that are maintained by district management are fairly stated and that they accurately represent the district balances at June 30th and also the revenue and expenditure activity for the twelve months there. That said, that's in the basic financial statements. That's the main document. At the back of that document, there's another separate audit that's specific to the federal awards of the district. And that's what we refer to as a single audit. And in that case, we act essentially as an extension of the federal government and we perform a compliance audit over the federal programs at the district under their compliance standards. It's called the Uniform Guidance. So we also perform that service for the district as well. Also in the package are a management letter and an auditor's communication letter. The management letter is basically our forum to provide any best practices or if we had any deficiencies that we noted in internal control that we thought could do some improvement, that's the letter that will put those recommendations on. Auditor communications basically reiterates the terms of the contract. You want to say, what's our responsibility at Josh and Malachi? And then what is the district's responsibility in order for the audit to go through effectively? So that letter just reiterates that both sides held up their end of the deal. And the last piece is an extra classroom activity report. That's actually a separate, smaller financial statement. That's on a cash basis. And that outlines all the activity of the student clubs and activities that are run throughout here. So coming up, we just have a few slides, like I said, similar to last year, with some financial highlights, and Charles will run you through those.
Thank you, Carl. Good evening. As I go through the financial highlights, as Carl mentioned, we'd like to focus on the general fund that oversees a sixty-four million dollar budget. And as you can see on this chart here, you like to show this, paints a picture of how your general fund is fair or trended over the last five years. It shows the blue line, which represents your revenue, your amount of grade, your budget. And it shows the red line, which is your expenditures, your level of service that you offer students. And obviously, every year, the goal is to keep the blue line, your revenues and your expenditures close to one another, matched budget that's the opposite. And as you can see, the first three years in that chart here, seventeen all the way to twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, district did a really good job in budgeting and making sure that the level of revenues and spending stayed close to one another, going up one year and staying consistent. Now, this paints a great picture of what happened with the pandemic starting in twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, where a lot of uncertainty existed and the district elected to stay cautious, save the future without knowing is federal aid going to dry up, state aid going to dry up, what's going to happen with inflation, pandemic costs, level of enrollment. So obviously, the red line decreased a little bit in controlling costs last year, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. Now, this year, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, district already planned to catch up on that spending, and they did with the red line increasing. And the actual increase in the red line, or the expenditures this year, is five million dollars. That five million dollars is roughly one point seven million dollars in instructional costs, one point four million dollars in included benefits, which both are standard with increases over the last several years. And the other component of five million dollar spending is one point three, four million dollars in debt service costs. There was a large bond that was issued last year to finance capital project, twenty-five million dollar bond. Obviously, this year was the first principal payment due. So that caused expenditures to go up by five million dollars, which was planned for. Revenue stayed consistent, only a five hundred thousand dollar increase. That increase was helped with eight hundred thousand dollars of new federal aid, CARES Act money that helped run some of the programs. And I like to point out sales tax. Sales tax did go up to two hundred thousand dollars. And if we were to talk about where sales tax would have ended up last year at this time, I bet a lot of us would have expected decrease. So it actually increased by two hundred thousand dollars. So the net difference between the red line, your expenditures, and your revenues this year is one point two million dollars that the district used fund balance. And that was actually planned for in the budget, with the district planning to use one million dollars. So how does this one point two million dollars use of fund balance affect total fund balances? This chart here shows total fund balances, which is split out into two components, what we consider to be restricted, legal reserves adopted by this body, and an unrestricted portion, which is available for use at the district's discretion. So twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, the higher column here shows total fund balance, eleven million dollars last year. Obviously, it went up by three point two million dollars with the savings that occurred last year with COVID. This year, total fund balance dropped to about nine point eight million dollars. As I said, the district used one point two million dollars this year, which correlates to the decrease to nine million dollars at twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Now, this slide here shows as a requirement for us to communicate and to test for compliance, the district, all districts are restricted by real property tax law, section thirteen eighteen, to ensure that they keep fund balance, unassigned fund balance level of at most four percent of next year's spending, which is the sixty-four million dollar budget. As you see, the second column to the right, last year with COVID pandemic, the district elected to exceed the four percent. Now, what that means is management has to come up with a plan of why they elected to do so. They were transparent in it. They communicated the plan in New York State. Due to the uncertainty, what's going to happen in the future, they elected to keep all the savings that they generated last year into unassigned fund balance to be available for use. This year, as you see, unassigned fund balance went from five point five million dollars to four point three million dollars. Once again, that's that one point two million dollar use of fund balance this year. So they planned on, all their use this year of fund balance was basically reducing unassigned fund balance to get back to that compliance of four percent. But once again, there's still uncertainty out there, and the district is transparent to ensuring that they still have a plan with New York State to say, we don't know what's going to happen, but every year, we're going to plan on using fund balance to make sure we reduce it four percent.
So this year, similar to last year, and I don't think this is coming as a surprise to this group, I'm sure the school business official has made it apparent that the four percent is going to be exceeded. That's sort of, you know, the position that Amherst District is taking. And you do have, you know, the proof to show that they did make an effort to spend it down, not pull it, you know, store it away, so to speak. It is coming back down, but that's seven point six percent is what will be reported in the financial statements this year as the compliance finding, as it relates to real property tax law. So overall observations, we look not only just at the numbers, but also at the policies and the procedures that affect all the numbers in those financial statements. And those are called here internal controls. So as it relates to internal controls, there were no reportable findings. And also, as I mentioned, that federal single audit that we performed, the compliance audit, there are no reportable compliance findings as it relates to that. So a clean report card when we look at both of those aspects. We are prepared, we're in a basically a final draft form. We're going back and forth on a few items with management in the draft financial statements, and then we'll move forward with making sure we issue by that October fifteenth deadline. But we're prepared to issue what's called an unmodified opinion, and that's a clean opinion, the highest level that you strive for and what you want. So we were able to meet with the audit committee a couple of weeks ago to go over draft amounts and discuss all of our observations in a little bit more detail. And I just wanted to make sure I informed the whole group tonight. We did talk about a change that the district was required to make, and it's strictly really in the financial statements. It's not a real general fund, a fund balance issue, but the district is subject to governmental accounting standards for GASB. And GASB statement number eighty-four was required to be implemented this year for the financials, and we helped make sure the district complies with those requirements in their financial statements. And this year, I just wanted to update the board and let you know it did take a great deal of effort and time and commitment from your staff. So I wanted to pay some compliments to the treasurer and her staff, as well as the school business official. They worked back and forth, specifically with Charles, the most in our office, to make sure that all those requirements were implemented for this year's financial statements. So I just didn't want it to go unrecognized. That's about it. We'll be looking to wrap up final drafts, probably circulate those, and look to issue next week. But we're here tonight, we do have, our contact information is on this last slide, so feel free to reach out if anything does come up. But if there are any questions tonight, we'd be happy to answer them.
I'll put that one in, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate the report. Next up, I have Dr. Shannon Hahn and Amy Stager, the new district officials, to report on some elementary curriculum work.
I'm back again. It's my favorite time of year. I get to talk about all the great work that's been going on. So tonight, the focus is on the elementary curriculum work that was done over the summer, will be done this school year, and I think you'll see in a minute that it's been done over multiple years. It's multi-layered. So I'm going to start with this image because I'm thinking of you as the audience, and I'm wondering, well, we've heard about FONICS first before. We've heard about AMPLECY before. So the committee work that's being done is sustained. So effective professional development or curriculum writing has to be teacher-driven, sustained over time, highly engaging, and has to have aspects that can be implemented immediately into the classroom so that they can practice. So the reason I'm bringing this up is the work that we do with these curriculum committees at the elementary and secondary level are made up of all these components. And that's why Amherst is highly successful, that when we adopt an initiative, it actually gets followed through and you can see, like, you can see it evident over time, which is really important because schools can change initiatives quickly. So FONICS first is something that I shared with you a couple of weeks ago, and this is something the ELA committee has been working on over time. And just to share with you the components that you saw on the second slide, we started out, and I'm going to take this briefly because I shared it a little bit, is that twenty, summer of twenty, going into twenty-one, we did pilot one, which was one teacher, one special education teacher in a co-taught classroom. They decided, and they came to Dr. Otto and I, and they said, we really feel like the word recognition instruction can be a little bit more explicit and a little bit stronger. And I said, interesting, because the data says that too. So let's try it. So that was pilot one. It then merged into pilot two because it was highly successful. We watched it, we looked at students' growth, we looked at implementation, how does it fit with all of our other programming, which is a problem when you bring in something new? How does it fit with the current practices that we don't want to lose a majority of those? So we did that. And then we had pilot two, which was our nine teachers, one from every grade level that piloted. And I kind of spoke with you about that two weeks ago a little bit, which led us to this year, which was full implementation. So why do I repeat and share this with you again? Once again, this is sustainable over time, and if I share with you, the committee members, it's teacher-driven. And so it's beyond the people on the screen that have worked on this. So this is multi-layered, multi-yeared work that is having some good traction for us. So what tonight, how can I show you a little bit more about where we are in this multi-year endeavor is, I'd like to take you in the classrooms. So thankfully, Laurie Sosenko helped me, and the teachers helped us grab some video footage so that you could actually see the first year of implementation. So I'm going to start off with K, and then we're going to move to one and two. And then a couple of things you have to, I want you to like think about when you're watching the video. Because the video is like a text, like literally reading form right now. Notice this, it is explicit. Notice that it's multisensory and notice that it's embodied. So multisensory, kids will be touching sand, they'll be touching rice, they'll be having bean bags, if you're using and manipulating along with words and sounds, the brain is attached to a body. We don't send the child's head to school, we send the whole body. So what we're trying to do is engage the body. It will increase retention and learning for students. We know that. You'll also see a little bit of, you'll hear about red bumpy paper. So when the kid writes on it, they can feel it. And that feeling, that multisensory approach also is another input method for students to retain. So as you're watching, look for that a little bit through these different videos and see how it changes. Molly and Lindsay are going to start us off with a little bit of discussion from Jamie, and you'll see, take a peek inside their classrooms. At a kindergarten level, this is.
Hi, I'm Holly Arden, and the first thing that you're going to see in our classroom is our primary communicative awareness activity. It is a one-minute drill. Today, we're focusing on rhyme and count on words. We incorporate units in all of our exercises because we want to make sure that they're both set in a brainwash technique. So you'll see the children using bean bags crossing the midline as we do our writing and count on words activities. Say sand. Sand. Bam. Sand. Bam. Bam. Alright, this is our lesson word session. Remember, I'm going to give you two words. I'm going to throw it up, and then give you two words. So side. Shy, that's a word? Feel. Chair. Chair. I am so lucky to have the opportunity to pilot this program last year. And although it was meant to be here with COVID, I was so impressed with the games that I saw on my kindergarten chairs with regards to isolating letter sounds and their ability to blend the sounds together to make words. The next clip you're going to see is our version doing the two-part drill, which is part of the FONICS program. Every day, we work on kids working on a specific sound in a visual way, an auditory way, and then also a learned way. Since it's just the beginning of kindergarten, we're doing a two-part drill where they are just working on seeing individually and also listening for the sound. You will see the incorporation of sand trays, which is a multisensory approach. This just allows the students to be actively engaged and also work out their own skills. So you're going to listen to the sound to give it a unique taste. Give it. Listen up one more time for O, ready? Good. Okay, get ready for it. Listen, ready? No. Ah. Oh. This year, I plan on implementing a program to its fidelity. Throughout the year, I will be looking for students to build automaticity, which can transfer over to other areas of the classroom, such as geography and writer's workshop. I anticipate that I will continue to see these remarkable gains and that I will see good transfer of student learning throughout the day in other content areas.
So that's a kindergarten, you remember, we're in first year of implementation, so even taking a risk to be on camera was amazing for them. I was very proud that I had takers that were willing to participate in this, to share with you a little bit. The first grade and second grade, so something that's really important that when you're looking at it, you might be thinking, why is this so important? So the segmentation of sound and the blending of sound is a precursor if you can do it auditorily for when you get to decode words, right? Sound and out words, saying them fast, blending them back together. What happens is if kids don't, are unable to do this, they're K books and they're one books, K in one level. There's a word in there that's more difficult, and it matches a picture. So what they'll do is they'll look up at the picture, they'll look at, you know, and they'll think about the sentence, and they'll be able to predict what that word is. When you start to get into second grade, the pictures become about this. So if you can't decode and you don't teach strong decoding in K in one, your AIS services will go up in second grade because the books change. So that's a clear signal that we're not teaching kids to segment and blend sound, right? So you'll see our teachers use their bodies and use them in ways such as you can blend or you can segment on your tap on your fingers. So I can go act, I can do it to my arm, act, I can do it across my body, act. And all of these motions help with retention with kids. So it's not just, if you're looking at it like it's playtime, it is playtime, but learning through the body is super important. One of the observations that we saw last year with our kindergartners that implemented was when they came to hard words or unknown words when they were writing, they started tapping down their arms, the sounds, and then started writing. And the teachers that we spoke with about this said they became more independent because they had a tool to start to sound and write versus raising their hand and asking for teacher help immediately. So those are some good observations. So those are some good observations we saw in year one. So here is first and second in this progression.
I'm going to tell you the vowel sound that you write it. So what do you do? If I say "ah," if I say "ah," then I'm going to go "O," and we'll go to one another. I'm going to tell you a sound. When you write it, you say the name and the sound. I say it up. Ready? Ready? Right. Yes. One vowel, and for the consonant, the syllable. So our vowel has to be short. Say the sound you see. It's like for AP, there's a moo sound, similar to the E sound for "the," F, and it's a multisensory activity, so they're actually of the type of "an" in "elephant," and it is typically a word that has the "F" sound in it. And then it factors down by writing, we eventually dictate words, and then segment. So they apply some of those skills they learned in the space. Here's a word that makes the accent. A word that makes the accent. A lot of students go to the sound "ah." Say "ah." Okay, "ah." One more time. We're going to remember "ah." That is a little bit of a common theme. And then "elephant," this is a bad word for elephant, because it's edible. It's water. And it's a stop. And it's a stop. Like, this is a water. You know what I'm going to say out of that? You start to see a water, wow, you're that. So every time that you hear a word that has an "F" sound, you're going to pretend you don't know it, it's always a water. What do you got going for you? Awesome. And "elephant," by the way, and like side along, like, not the other way. This is the first word. "Elephant." Nice job. Remember that water? Why would these words look like this in the hall of the crowd? Very nice, oh, I'm going to say that again. Oh, my, these are words, Taylor, that you have to stop and think about. These are words that you cannot just sound out. There is something different about this word. Good morning, glad you're here. Ready to watch and move that word with me? Let's do it three times. Here we go. Time. Here we go. See, that means, why do we have this bumpy screen? Why do we have to put it underneath our paper? Can you feel the word as you're spelling it? That is exactly what we want to do. Excellent. So for this part, we're going to go through the presentation.
So those are our intermediate grades, and not that you need to memorize this, but red words are those words that Jody was teaching at the end that don't have phonetic sounds, and so we have to memorize those instead because they're not, they're irregularly spelled words. So the program addresses that as well for students. So I just want to give you a glimpse of what it looked like and what our students are dealing with and what they're working on this year in their own practices, and we'll leave all of the student data to look for increases in learning as the hope and the goal. So moving on to the science committee, representing them tonight and talking about some of the work that we've done with Amplify, which you again heard about because it's sustained, highly teacher-driven and engaging. And same issue as before is how can I show you what's going on? So when we interviewed some teachers who are actually sharing with you what it's meant for them, what they're doing, and there's a little bit of classroom practice in there, but we're hoping that you hear their voices because typically, they will be presenting with you this evening.
So today, in that lesson, we were working on our Amherst app. And we've been working with you gathering words in science, using the expertise of words through hands-on experiments with curriculum seeds. We have research, I already have an approach above. And students have thought differently about these words and how seeds, sunlight, and water rely on one another. Our students are currently trying to investigate why our tall trees are not growing, they are tied or preserved. So our students are living in different realities. They're working with hands-on experiments. Our students are creating and comparing the information from these sources, are looking at data tables to determine why the tall seeds are not growing. We're just looking at the beginning of our unit, so we're still working on the development and applying these words to the parents.
New York State Science Standards were adopted in order to address science, exploring whether to do science, and attitude, and learning, and math. And in search of maybe uses the standards, focuses primarily on, I guess, to engage in real-world scientific practices, maybe them the scientists, maybe them the researchers, maybe them, but the ones that are definitely cultivating, that are changing, really wants to be in the sciences and other things.
I have a feeling I'm a fourth-grade including teacher here at Smallwood. Amplify gave me regular opportunities that my kids seem that normally see. I've been able to see and implement Amplify firsthand in grade one, two, and four, and the same thing is definitely true. Kids who struggle responding to texts were able to find success in an increased engagement of writing because Amplify gave these other committees for written responses and evidence that were not typically seen in their school day. My kids enjoy being able to write about their own scientific process as they work through the units. Particularly for my fourth graders, I could see the period of learning of the ELA responses while we found clues and evidence from the study to the text.
At classes, you know, special education students as well, if you were kind of a parent, I can understand these readers will gather their words, working, or they're carrying them through their books that they're reading, they're investing with their hands on the students, as they're carrying them from a club repeatedly, if they're frying in one of our academic textbooks.
Hearing phenomena that my students are using are real-world problems that are motivating to them, and they are excited to try and work through. These lessons are structured so that all students can be successful, and the materials are really wonderful. In my lessons, we act like real scientists, even have behavior taught. We read to give information, we participate in hands-on investigation, and then we record what we have observed. We talk with each other, and we learn how to ask questions about things that we do not understand. We write about what we've learned, using the evidence that we have from the investigation and through reading and writing. The new standards for science that I achieve, the next-generation science standards, is a really great shift, that's a huge shift required for teachers and for students in the way that we're approaching science. So for example, one of the things that I would have done before is I would have printed out my vocabulary for a whole unit, and we would have made our textbooks and stuff, preloaded all of that learning ahead. And now, if we're, it's phenomena, a question that I would ask the students, and we start working with evidence. And, well, what do we think? What we support, what we think? And the students are, sometimes we wonder, well, what's the answer? Like, we're going to find out soon. And I don't know if I get with that really, and they're doing really well with it. Well, okay then, all right, we'll find you soon. And then as we pull off, and they're working with their evidence cards, I'll say, "Well, this is interesting, now notice, we have the vocabulary word. Now, what do we think that means?" And instead of you telling them what it means, as they have experience and exposure with the words, they're going to be able to tell you what it means. In June last year, I asked a few of my students, "What do you think you are really good at now that the school year is over?" And almost half of the students in my class said science. So making science a priority in my classroom and teaching to the MTSS standards meeting Amplify has helped create a group of kindergarten students that already see themselves as scientists. It's exciting to think about what they will be able to do.
So in this clip, you got to meet Susan Cervilli. She's been working with our teachers in implementation, she's got plans for them, she models for them, she will co-teach with them, or she will provide them with feedback, so that, I thought you might want to see her. She's in there, she's meeting with our ICT co-teachers that are all new in science. Every week, she meets every Wednesday with them, and she helps them as they're navigating the new science standards. You'll notice in the video, they're calling them next-generation science standards. New York has adopted them as, as a New York State science standard soon, but they're coming off of next-gen science standards. So we're having success so far, and you know, we're learning as we're moving through this process. Once again, lots of teachers working on this from the science committee together, sustained work over time, heavily involved. And just a short snippet, because usually on this evening, every committee comes and reports to you, and I get to do all of it tonight, just so that we all stay safe and healthy here. I'm going to give you a teaser with the elementary math committee. It's a little bit brief because this work that we're doing with them is at a starting point. So thankfully, we now have interventionists in K one and two, which we have not only had. And that's really important, one, because of the year and a half that we're coming out of, but also, if we wait to intervene until kids are in third grade, the gaps are already there. So now I'm trying to recover multiple years' worth of gaps. So one of the things that our committee is working with Dr. Nermalin, a talking from Buffalo State College, who works with math instruction, she's phenomenal. And this summer, the math committee got together with math AIS teachers, and they determined big ideas that were non-negotiable concepts that kids have to learn by the end of K one and two. And actually, they pushed Nermalin, they're now moving to third, third grade as well because they really wanted to do it together conceptually. So the big ideas are identified, they're defined, and now they have suggested materials. That is not specific enough for us to actually intervene and be able to help kids where they're at. So what we're doing is every month, Nermalin comes in and she meets with K one and two interventionists. They look at the big concepts that need to be taught, and they're developing multiple interventions and progress monitoring tools to follow kids' growth. The goal is to get them in intervening and get them out, get them back into, I showed you that peer live with tier one, Mike and Maria have bought in a program with MTSS. We want them in tier one. We don't want them lifers in intervention. So can we have a targeted concept, skill, strategy we want to focus on? Interventions, multiple ones, because we don't know how students are going to respond to each intervention. Everybody learns differently. And then find a way to figure out if it's working. Are we teaching the kids the way they learn? And then if we are, they should be exiting out after eczema leaks and getting them caught up. So this, we're very fortunate that the board, you know, approved these positions, and we have these extra AIS positions, and we really feel like we can increase student learning and we can be successful in helping students come into third grade and tackle those gaps. So more to come on them, their work in progress right now, and by next year, they should have some good information to report to you. So I'm going to stop there. If there's any questions, I'm fine specific, and then I'm going to introduce Amy, so it's great. Okay, so I'm excited, but I'm going to, Amy is going to talk. We've spoken with you about learning gaps and increasing student learning, and we have shared with you about summer school before. So.
I'm fine, I'm sorry. Sorry.
What an introduction.
I'm good.
So with Amy, I wanted her to pick up from our summer school discussion. She's really done a nice job of working across both buildings, Smallwood and Windermere. What are we doing to tell our students learning and beating them at just the right time and progressing them forward? Middle school's doing the same thing, but that's another night, so I'll let Amy take it from there.
So, good evening. I am Amy Sager, the proud assistant principal here at Windermere, and I'm going to share with you tonight our MTSS processes on both elementary schools. So although I'm at Windermere, these same things are happening at Smallwood. So I just want to start with this year. This is kind of how we started all of our grade-level meetings, grounding ourselves in this dark reality that we're living in right now in 21, 22. I think in 1920, we thought, "This is a year like no other." Then in 2021, we're like, "Okay, this is a year like no other." And now we're back at it, or again, in another year that's like no other that we've had. So I want you to just take a second and look at this little graphic that was on social media, so you may have seen it, to take a minute to kind of ground us on where we're at. So I think the first one that stuck out to me, maybe because it's right on top, is those seventh graders. At Amherst Middle School, I haven't had a normal year since fourth grade in our elementary building, right? My oldest son's in fourth grade, hasn't had a normal year since first grade. And our primary students never had a normal year before, right? Probably affected their UPK or their pre-K. Probably affected their pre-K three program. So it really grounded our teachers and our building in what we're dealing with right now. And really, what we're dealing with is interrupted schooling, right? We talked a little bit, a lot of Windermere, we have students who moved from other countries, right? And maybe they've had interrupted schooling, and we might call them a psych student, right? A student with interrupted formal education. And I'm almost wrapping my head around this year, is all of our students have had interrupted formal education, this interrupted schooling. And what we know about interventions, kind of like Dr. Shanahan just talked about, we know that we can intervene our way out of a 20% risk level. So when we have 20% of our students at risk, we can use tier two, tier three interventions, and we can, what we say, intervene our way out of that. Unfortunately, this global pandemic has created a tier one problem, right? Our risk levels are higher than 20% because of what you just saw, right? And this interrupted schooling. So we have, we have a tier one problem that we cannot intervene our way out of. So this is the message that I shared with all of our teachers when I met with grade levels this week. And let me tell you, if I've ever been impressed with Amherst teachers, which I have since I've been here, through the roof, my level of respect for these professionals that we work with, it's just incredible. We sat together as grade-level teams, I shared that exact information, and what we saw was this attitude of every kid here in our school is our student. Not all their struggling, they're yours. You provide the intervention. It's what can we do, all of us, to support all of our students? It was incredible. I even talked to Mr. Finella on Friday, I was like, "My assistant principal cup is so full." Like, today was amazing, the conversations that we got to have about teaching and learning and about our kids. So they were collaborative. We sat kind of like this around a room facing each other, were able to collaborate and problem solve. They were so positive. The level of concern was, was there because our risk level is there, but it was appropriate for the setting. It was so professional and extremely productive. So really, the enthusiasm and the momentum of teaching and learning here at Amherst was back, and this MTSS process is back. So what I want to go over is just what is MTSS, right? What's an overview? What do the meetings look like, sound like, and feel like? And then how are we actually bridging these gaps? So MTSS, Dr. Shanahan kind of touched on this, right? We have these three tiers. I know this slide is a little busy, but it's important. With MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, used to be called Response to Intervention or RTI, we have two sides of the triangle. So we have a social, emotional, and behavioral side, and an academic side, right? And this is a framework for which we use data to make decisions and to problem solve. Every kid, every decision that's made kind of goes through this pyramid. I was doing this a lot last week. Looks like a volcano, but it's just going through that pyramid. So tier one are the interventions every child gets. On the academic side, it's our good, high-quality core instruction, high-quality differentiation. On the social- On the social, emotional, behavior side, at Smallwood it's pause, at Windermere it's response at classroom, it's our strong classroom management. But then as we move up the pyramid, we have students who don't respond to that either, right? So we have to intensify our interventions. So maybe on the social, emotional, behavior side, it's a small group counseling group, right? Or it's a homeschool communication help-up, or an in-class behavior plan. And on the academic side, maybe it's a small group reading intervention. Then again, we have some of those students who don't respond to that intervention either, that would go up to Tier 3, and it's much more intensive. Maybe a one-on-one reading intervention, maybe a one-on-one counseling session. So this MTSS process started, actually, my first year at Windermere. In 1920, Dr. Shanahan got both elementary schools together, actually committees together, and we worked with Teresa Janzett, Dr. Janzett from Buffalo State. So she worked with us to really align and enhance our current practices. Both schools were already looking at data, right? And that wasn't a new process, but the way in which the meetings were run and the way in which decisions were made, some of those were tweaked and enhanced. So then we had our first meeting cycle, that I'm going to explain, in like the winter of 2020, just before we shut down, so like end of January, early February of 2020. So then last year was really our COVID year. We completed pre-assessments on every student, we completed post-assessments on every student, but we didn't have our normal data cycle for a long time. So now, like I said, the momentum's back, like we're back on track. Can you tell you how many teachers were like, "Oh, I just can't wait to pick that baton up." Like, we had so much momentum in 1920, and now we finally get back together to do that work. So what is this cycle? Well, you'll see we do it three times a year. Starts with benchmarking, then we have building-level data meetings, grade-level data meetings, and then progress monitoring, which leads us into the next cycle in the winter, same four steps for the next cycle in the spring. So what do we mean by benchmarking? Well, we are screening assessments that every single student, Tier 1, takes. So they are given three times a year by our school-wide assessment team. So that's really made up of our interventionists, our school psychologists, our enrichment, gifted and talented teacher. And what we do is, we meet before each benchmark, and there are fantastic teams at both benches, and we do some like inter-rater reliability protocols, so we're sure that when we administer these assessments, they're valid and they're reliable, and our practices are sustainable between all of us. So the fast bridge assessments that are given at K1 is called Early Read and Early Math. There are seven probes that are given one-on-one between an assessor and then the child. And then in grades 2 through 5, they're actually adaptive assessments given on the Chromebooks. So by default, if any student, when they respond, the next question adapts to their response given by the student. So if they get the answer right, the next question's going to be a little bit higher in difficulty, right? If they answer incorrectly, it might go down a little bit. And what that gives us is like a general performance indicator of how well the student will perform, and if they're at risk or not. So all these are, are screening tools. It's giving like a temperature, okay? It's giving a dipstick of like, is there a risk, right? Could there possibly be this? That's always there is, or where it is, but there could be this. So then, we have all that data, we bring it together, and make it kind of adjustable, and we meet at the building-level committee. Now, our building principals are the facilitators of these meetings. And we have a diverse representation from the building. So at Windermere, we have an L teacher, we have gen ed teachers, we have specialized teachers, we have interventionists, and explaining it myself. So representative of the entire building. And we look at school-wide risk levels. So we really take that like bird's eye view of Windermere, we look at grade levels, where who has the greatest risk, where their percentages are, and then we also look at like the disentegrated subculture, right? How are students with disabilities doing? How are English language learners doing? And then, we identify where those greatest risk percentages are, where we're most concerned about. And then we make sure that our staffing is distributed equitable, right? So if we just said, "Oh, every grade level gets, you know, one interventionist," use it as you wish, or figure that out, it's going to be equal? It's not going to be exactly the same, right? So for example, if like our fifth grade has 12% risk, right, and our second grade has 40% risk, we want to put, right, more staffing and interventions there to hopefully move that mark, and not just equally distribute them. And then we set goals. So we say, "Okay, wow, second grade's at 40%, we're going to increase the time, right? We really want to focus there. We want to see that high-risk number move from 40 to 30 at the next step." And then we want to see that low-risk number move from, you know, 20 to 10. And we set goals for ourselves. So then, and this is the fun part, we meet at the grade level. So this was a new practice, I think it's Smallwood, it was somewhat new, definitely a new practice at Windermere, where we sat down just like this, and it's all the grade-level teachers, all the specialized teachers, any E and L teacher, all of our interventionists. And then starting this winter, we'll also have our PPS staff for the other half of the triangle, that data just isn't finished yet because our teachers are learning their students. So we all sit around just like this, it was like 15 to 18 people, and we literally go kid by kid, based on that fast bridge data. So we start with fast bridge as our starting point, and we talk about the kid at the highest risk, and we go down, talk about all the students at risk. And then we use multiple data sources. So I guess that fast bridge is a temperature, right, a dipstick, and then we ask our teachers, "Okay, what other data do you have? Does your data support this data?" We actually said, like, "You say, 'That's my kid, that's me.'" And then he ran for a couple questions. So that's actually what brought some joy to the meetings, everyone just goofing around, like, "That's my kid, that's me." And then they'd share. So yeah, my data does support what you're seeing in fast bridge. This is their F and P level, their guide reading level. I would recommend, or their area of need is really fluency. So I would recommend a fluency intervention, probably a small group would be appropriate. And then the interventionists can chime in. And the rest is at grade levels hearing this. So the feedback from these meetings is just wonderful. Like honestly, it's so positive. Like, that was the most positive meeting, that was the most worthwhile meeting. I got to see what my colleagues are also feeling about, right? A lot of times, teachers are like, "Oh my gosh, all my kids are struggling, I have so many struggling readers." But then they need to see the grade levels as a whole and realize, "Oh, right, my readers aren't actually as struggling as I thought they were." So the feedback from these meetings is really, really positive. So we leave that meeting knowing which students are going to get service and what intervention they're going to get. And then, because of this Tier 1 problem that I said at the beginning, teachers walked away from these meetings this year, knowing that they had students in their classroom at risk who were not going to get pulled, right? Because we can't, it's not going to work, and we don't have the staffing, and they were like, "We got it." Right, "We got it." I'm confident that with five days of Amber's instruction, this student is going to make growth. I can handle it, I'm going to monitor. So that's what I meant by like, "Our students." Everybody took the collective in helping everyone. So then after that meeting, we obviously can't wait till the winter to reevaluate, is this working, right? How's this taking? So that's really on the interventionist and the classroom teacher. So the interventionist collects weekly or bi-weekly progress monitoring, and fast bridge, the tool that we use, has a component for that, and they're constantly collecting this data. So if they see, like Dr. Shanahan said, the intervention's really working, I think they're ready to go back to the classroom. They can do that. Or they might say, "They're not showing the growth that we need to see in eight weeks. I think I should change the intervention." So those conversations are happening between the benchmarks, with the interventionists, and the classroom teacher. So that's really our four-cycle process. The benchmarking, universal screener, building-level meetings, grade-level meetings, progress monitoring. So then the last thing, I just want to touch on is like, so what are we doing to bridge these gaps, right? I told you in the beginning, we have a Tier 1 problem, I just explained our intervention process, but like, so what are we really doing to bridge these gaps? So first and foremost, our Tier 1 instruction, right? Our teachers are craft, they're experts at their craft, they know good, solid, quality instruction. We've purchased programs such as Bonn Experts to support Tier 1 instruction, and then we're also focusing on pre-assessments. So in math, for example, right, there's a scoping sequence. So if we just say, "Oh, second grade, they, you know, they didn't get to their last three units," and we start at third grade with those last three units, it wouldn't make sense because math staffed on itself. So we're trying to do pre-assessments, and then those just-in-time classroom like backfilling and interventions. So as each module, each unit comes up, our teachers are pre-assessing their students to see, "Where are the gaps, right? Do they have the prerequisites skills they need to succeed in this unit? And if they don't, I'll later be not, right? And in the next module, the same thing. So pre-assessments and that backfilling. Then we also have these intervention menus that we've created that are new. This summer, our reading interventionists worked together to create a variety of options to meet our students' needs. So it's not like a one-size-fits-all. Yep, they're coming to add another intervention, and I have one thing I can do with that. We're really trying to target the need with the intervention. So we're working just fluency, just number ID, just number sequencing, and really trying to target that need, like Dr. Shanahan said, so they can go back there. And then with math, in the primary level, that's a brand-new position thanks to the board's support, so now our youngest students are getting math intervention as well. Our teaching assistants, another huge district initiative, our K1, 2 classrooms, each have a teaching assistant for part of their day. They're trained in providing one-on-one interventions for our students. So the teachers have all this data, they set up a procedure and a process, and those TAs are working with these students. After-school programs, we're in the process of creating some after-school programs in both reading, writing, math. So we will select these students that could use more intervention or support, or might be like the right fit for the program that we create that could be just enough to move them. Summer school, as you know, last year, we had a really successful summer school program. And actually, at these grade-level meetings, some teachers were there, taught summer school, and they were like, "Oh, that was my student in the summer! This is the progress that they made from the end of last year till now." And that was so helpful to the conversation, to know what went on during those six weeks. So we're hoping, again, next year to have a summer school, and so that would fit into this MTSS process. And spring, who do we think is a good candidate for the summer school program? And we've seen intervention after intervention after intervention, either working, but we've got to keep it up, right? Or not working, and they might be that summer school. And then finally, we still have in place an instructional support team. Where we have students who are getting Tier 1 interventions, no luck, not responding. Then Tier 2 and 2, 3 is still not responding, changing the intervention, we come together with the parents, with everybody that works with that student, and we decide, "Is there something else going on? Do we need some more testing? We need, we need to figure out..." Really, it's a collaborative problem-solving meeting, to find out what else can we do here to meet those students. And that's all I have. So are there any questions for me?
So, what are the actual numbers really like?
What are they? For risk?
Yeah.
Um, they're above 20% for sure. So some grade levels at 40, some are at 47, some are at 30.
Can we get some more detail?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, it's one dipstick is the, is really the point of it, but yeah, we couldn't.
They're just in progress right now, finishing those and collecting. Probably might stay able to talk about both buildings, not just one, if somebody goes out. We need Tier 1, it's going to be an issue, because when you go hybrid and you have less school, although we were affected, and we did a good job, there's always going to be room for improvement. So, you know, the anticipation of the going up is there. We're also looking at where, though, like fractures is a problem in elementary school and math and local. Like, it's a very real concern that needs to be looked at. Not alarming, but there's just less time to be taught. So, the other issue is, we need to back a school five days a week, like for reading and reading, and those two teams are going to go, because they're just going to go up at a Tier 1 level because we're going to have increases of eyes on text and you're going to see increased growth. So we will share those, we just wanted to have small numbers, really, to be there to govern. So we'll definitely do that.
Sure.
But we are prepared to change our units and our teaching to meet the Tier 1 needs that are just still there. And they're going to be, they're going to be around home country, so that's. But my concern is, we kind of need to come in and share with you, because we have a criminal looking on it, and we were attacking it, we're not waiting to see what's going to happen, right? So as data comes out, we're sure we can handle it.
Thank you. All right, thank you. I'm not going to fall anywhere.
Thank you, nice show.
So given, I mean, you're all keenly aware of, you know, what we've been dealing with since the 1920 school year in terms of public safety planning and reinventing our schools and, you know, reorganizing all of our processes. I also, it's nice to showcase all of the work that's going on, you know, curriculum-wise as well as teaching and learning-wise. You know, that's very impressive that you've been able to keep initiatives going that started in 1920, throughout everything we faced over 2021 and into this school year, and that we're able to successfully implement programs and supporting our teachers and moving forward. So it's great to see this work's coming back and this work becoming more of a priority in addition to all of the things that the buildings have to manage on a daily basis with contact tracing and safety protocols and all of implementing those safety plans. So great job, thank you. That's it for the superintendent's report tonight.
Okay. We will need a motion for new business items.
So make a motion for new business items, E1, E through F, 2, B through E, 3, C, D, E, and H.
We have a second.
One second.
Any discussion? Great, all those in favor of approving new business items, E1, E through F, 2, B through E, and 3, C, D, E, and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries 7-0. With that, I'd like to welcome three new team members here tonight that I understand are here, Ms. Gleason, Ms. Grover, and Ms. Ells. If you wouldn't mind just standing up and introducing yourselves to us, we would appreciate it, as close to where you're going to be.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Gleason, I'm going to be at the middle school, co-teaching sixth grade science, as a special education teacher. So thank you all for allowing me here.
Great, welcome aboard.
Hi, I'm Julianne Grover, I was hired as a school counselor at the family support center. I'm excited to join the team.
Great, welcome aboard.
I'm Mary Els, I teach straight, so I'll be at Windermere and Smallwood Elementary. So I'm excited to be a start.
Wonderful, welcome aboard, thank you. Ms. Castoli, do we have any follow-up action items?
No.
All right, we will need a motion then to go to executive session.
I'll make a motion to motion to executive session, or appoint a particular person.
Need a second. Ms. Smith, all those in favor of commuting to executive session, will they say aye? Aye, pose, motion carries 7-0. Thank you everyone for coming.